I call the Planning Commission meeting for September 25, 2025 to order, and we will begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jackie, will you call the roll?
Mr. Cracker?
Here.
Mr. Haddon?
Here.
Mr. Perkovich?
Excused.
Mr. Rosetti?
Excused.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Here.
Mr. Varga?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from our regular meeting on September 4, 2025.
So moved.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Cracker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. On tonight's agenda, we have one public hearing, and we will follow this format. First, the applicant will have the opportunity to explain what they would like to do at a particular location. Second, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposal will be given the opportunity. Finally, anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be afforded the time to do so, or some people may just have questions, and we will try to get those answers. And with that, we have a conditional use permit to allow a recreational facility golf simulator at 8020 Tyler Boulevard, Unit 102B. Is that applicant here? Please come up, give us your name and address, and tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do.
My name is Corey Cantrell. We are currently located at 8613 Tyler Boulevard. We've been open for about two years, indoor golf facility. We've done well so far, and we're really just looking to expand our current operations into a larger facility where we can, you know, have more clients at a time, hold more people. As of right now, most of what we do is just, we rent out simulator bays so golfers have a place to play year-round. We do lessons, club fittings, all that kind of stuff as well.
Thank you. Is there anybody wishing to speak for this proposal? Anybody wishing to speak against this proposal? This public hearing is closed. Larry, anything from the administration?
Just the three conditions that are in the staff report.
Anything from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve with the three conditions.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Cracker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under old business, we have an architectural review of a commercial building at 7850 Mentor Avenue, Unit 100. That applicant is asset that remain on the table. Under new business, a final site plan of a fire station at 8091 Plaza Boulevard. That applicant here?
Mr. Chairman, would it be okay if I address the board from this position?
Sure.
Since I'm already here. Also, I have Mr. Doug Williams with App Architecture that's here to speak about our project as well. Maybe I can start this off a little bit. I think some of you are familiar with this project. It's been in the works and quite visible through work sessions of city council, for those who've paid attention to that. But we purchased approximately just under three acres of property at the intersection of Plaza Boulevard and State Route 84, Johnny Cake Ridge Road for the purpose of reconstructing a fire station, well, building a new fire station number three. City currently has five fire stations. This is our most active fire station, and this will be a completely new design. The station itself is approximately just under 22,000 square feet. It has, I'm just giving you a brief summary, five bays for equipment and appropriate accommodations for our firefighter staff, both in terms of the number of bedrooms and other facilities associated with their living quarters. But in addition to that, this is our first station in the city that will include a significant training component. Maybe I can ask the chief to just say a little something about that, if I could.
Sure. The training facility will have a four-story training tower where we can do confined space, stand-by pose evolutions, flow some water, search and rescue on the mezzanine, and a classroom where we can do in-station instruction.
The station itself will have two entry points, exit and entry points. The first will be off of Plaza Boulevard. We are working with the city engineer. We will be placing a signalization at the intersection, where you see the drive approach on Plaza Boulevard so that you can go either north or south there, as well as off of State Route 84 and the existing signal that's there, which the city has realized an easement for, for access to that. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Williams, answer any questions you might have, and certainly happy to do that as well. You have, I think, plenty of images to show you the different elevations, as well as we have some building material samples here to share with you. Don't have a lot, but we do have the brick types that can be passed around here in a moment. Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I think, Doug Williams, 615 Woodside, Inglewood, Ohio, 45322, App Architecture. I think Ken covered the site plan fairly well. Just want to mention that the way the site is set up to the west is where the public entrance would be. We have a little bit of parking on that side of the building. And then on the east side is the training side. The apparatus would exit towards the north, and when they return, they'll come around the training tower, around the training side on the Johnny Cake side, and then pull through the bays. We do not have apron access right to Johnny Cake, so all the emergency traffic will go kind of to the north and out to Plaza. Any questions on the site plan?
Any question? I guess we'll just mesh this all together here. Larry, anything from administration?
I think Ken summed it up.
From the commission members, I guess on architectural or preliminary site plan?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Varga.
Rendering is so good. I think they're interesting. I don't see any rooftop equipment. Is there any rooftop equipment?
We will probably have some rooftop penetrations, just vents, small stuff. But any sizable rooftop equipment, we're going to have on the ground or concealed in some fashion. But the plan would be not to have any sizable roof penetrations on the main roof slopes.
The roofs look nice, clean.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd hate to see a big thing sitting up there with a fence around it.
In the rear of the building, basically in the junction between the apparatus bay and the dorm area, we will have a condensing unit sitting in that general area.
On the roof?
No, it'll be on the ground. It'll be a ground set unit, yes. And it shows up on the site plan, generally where it's going to be. It's not on the floor plan, if you go to the site plan. Just kind of on the left-hand side. On that side would be the generator and the transformer. Yes, in that area, right. And we have a screen wall planned for that area. The condensing unit is that square right there, yes. There's a chance it's going to be a little closer to the building, but it'll generally be in that area.
How large does a piece of equipment have to be before our requirement to have it screened cuts in?
Any ground-mounted equipment is required to be screened.
On the ground, on the roof?
Usually, we look at roof-mounted HVAC units. If they have a penetration for a vent or something, we don't look at those.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
And our plan would be to screen off that condensing unit as well, whether it be a landscape screen or a masonry screen. We'll kind of work that out.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Haddon?
Oh.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cracker?
Just curious, so the doors, I like the look of them. Are they traditional roll-up doors, or are they a new style? I haven't seen.
Those are a new-style door. It's a four-fold door.
Okay.
So they actually open to the side versus going up.
Is there a reason for that?
They're a little bit quicker and a little bit more reliable than a traditional sectional door. The guys are less likely to kind of hit them when they're pulling out because of sectional door. They come out of the way really quick. They are a little more expensive, but they are quicker and more reliable, yeah.
Every second counts.
And they look great. They do look much better.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Haddon?
No, go ahead. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Just a question regarding the Plaza Drive, right in, right out.
Sure.
Was there any thought to removing the island in the middle so they can go?
I believe they are, I'm probably going to go wrong, Ken, but they are removing that island in the middle, yes, to create a cut-through.
Yeah, that will be signaledized only for use by the fire department, so that break, there will be a Boulevard break there. But I also point out that that driveway will be exclusively for fire department use, and it'll be signed as such, from both directions, actually, from the mall side and coming in off of Plaza.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
Following along the logic of how the vehicle circulation is, the driveway that's going to, on the north going to the east, what is the, I mean, how do you keep people from using that from the public side, not from the, you know, from the coming off of Plaza, coming off of Johnny Cake, or what is it called? Well, with the Great Lakes Mall sign is on the thing. How do you keep the public from getting in there?
I do not have an answer to that at this point in time. This is stump.
So, Mr. Varga, are you talking about if they're on Plaza heading, you know, I guess either direction?
No, if they come in, where, let's see, is, you put the site plan? Well, I mean, the, like.
Oh, the aerial.
Yeah, the aerial. Yeah, see, yeah, like. Where are we at here? Well, I'm talking about coming off of Johnny Cake, not the Plaza Boulevard, but the driveway to the east. It's boulevarded. It gives access to the parking areas to the north. It comes in right next to the mall. How do you keep people from, I mean, is it just signage?
Yeah, it will be predominantly with signage.
You know, do not enter, you know.
Do not enter. We have an interesting similar challenge at the Cleveland Clinic Hospital, where if you notice, if you're traveling north on 615, there's a very heavily signed area there that shows that that's strictly, entry to the emergency area is strictly for.
Exactly what you're talking about, right.
And we found that we've had pretty good compliance there. We also have means to enforce that if we didn't.
I don't want to know. So in all cases, though, the emergency equipment will not, when they come out of the garage, they will not go right. They'll always go left.
When they pull out of the garage, the north, they can head left or right. If they want to go east, we'll go right. If we're going to go north, south, or to the west, we'll turn.
Okay, so they will go that way. They'll come back out on Johnny Cake, and then they'll go. Okay, just, but they'll be integrated then at that point with the public, because the public will be. Of course, Plaza Boulevard is like that too, so, okay.
Asset control.
Anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion for the site plan vote.
What is it, how many conditions?
I guess that's a motion to approve with the four conditions.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Cracker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Architecture review of a fire station at 8091 Plaza Boulevard. Do we have any more discussion on that? I'll entertain a motion on the architecture review.
Motion to approve.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Cracker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Preliminary site plan of an industrial building at 9500 Hamilton Drive. Is that applicant here? Please come up, give us your name and address, and tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do.
Richard Summers, we're proposing a 158,000-square-foot building primarily distribution on an approximately 11-acre site across from the previous building we built. It was 125,000 square feet on Hamilton. I do have the architect here tonight, Jeff Serto, and Dave Novak from Barrington Consultants to answer any questions that the commissioner or the staff may have.
Thank you. Larry, anything from the administration on the site plan?
Just the five conditions as noted.
Anything from the commission members? Site plan? Normally, sometimes we give a little heads-up on any architectural throughout this process, if anybody has anything there, but.
We do have a board, so we have some brick samples to offer tonight. One thing I will say is that we've stepped up on this building compared to the one across the street where we have three separate entrances, because it's a multi-tenant building. These, if you notice in the center, we've a little bit more pronounced on the entranceway in the center of the building. I've stepped it up a little bit versus the building across the street where this is more a pronounced entryway. As far as screening, I know that's important to the board. We do have a sloped roof here, and it would be similar to the building across the street where you cannot see any of the rooftop units. They're placed strategically, so they cannot be seen from the street. This particular building compared to the one across the street, there's only a front view. The other one was basically had a street on both sides, Hamilton and Merka Tile. It was a little bit of a challenge. This building will not be a challenge because we can put it to the rear and screen it.
Thank you. Is anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Haddon?
I'd just like to make, I'd like to add a number six, because I see our fire department has not yet had a chance to review these, so they're just preliminary. But I think a six would be, you know, comments may be coming from our fire department.
We would address that at the time. We've worked very closely with Aqua to address the water pressure situation in this industrial park. We are putting in a new PRV valve at Hamilton and Heasley to boost the pressure. So that is actually in place, in process, and I have no issue with it being a condition. But it's been, we've been working on that for about a year to up. And that will actually benefit the whole, both streets, because we will be upping the water pressure that has been historically low in that area. And at our expense, we're putting in a new PRV valve to boost pressure for sprinkler systems.
I have a question.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga, go ahead.
I'm glad the fire chief is here. The way the pavement is organized, I mean, it meets all the requirements that you have for the project, and the trucks come in in a separate lane and come around the back. Is there any interest or concern about the fire department being able to go completely around the building?
We prefer to go completely around the building.
Right, that's what I was thinking. So, I mean, I see you have some future parking spaces. Is there a reason you couldn't at least create a drive without the spaces so that the fire trucks could go all the way around the building if they needed to?
My name is Dave Novak. Address is 9114 Tyler Boulevard, Mentor, Ohio. We could, but what we're trying to do here is really to try to keep the, you know, the truck traffic and the people who would be visiting this facility separate. So I don't know that we would. So your answer to the question is yes, but we're trying to just keep those two areas separate so you don't have trucks driving through.
Going through the parking lot.
Going through the parking lot.
Right. Well, again, that could possibly be handled with signage, you know, like what we were just talking about with the fire station, keeping the cars and the trucks or the fire department separate. I just, and I'll, you know, they're going to review it, and it may be their desire to have that. And I would just suggest that maybe you might want to look at that, too. Not necessarily develop the parking with, but just the drives so that they can drive along.
Correct. We've done that before.
Right.
But that was the thought process behind it.
I understand. And, you know, you might be able to handle that with signage or.
Right, but we can truly talk to the fire department.
Red light, it says, "Don't go." Yeah, "Don't go there," right?
Unless you're in a real hurry.
Yeah, well, no, not.
It is preliminary.
Yeah.
Is there anything else?
Questions for the architect who's here?
The building is pretty attractive for, you know, the nature of the building, I mean, the kind of building it is. My biggest concern would be that it looks nice, and you've got, is that's a brick base or a masonry base?
Jeff Serto, DSC Architects, 401 Front Street, Korea. We have a brick base at the entries. And then beyond that, it's.
It's just colored, is it tilt-up? Is it all, is it tilt-up construction?
Yes, precast.
Right.
Yeah, so it's a textured finish.
Yeah, and so you're either coloring or texturing the tilt-up before it goes up, actually.
Correct, well after it's up.
Well, after, the texturing after it goes up.
Yeah.
The center is brick.
The center part is brick, the, yes, I understand. Okay, no, I just wanted some clarification there on that. That's, I think, relatively speaking, it's a, you know, it's an attractive building.
Anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with six conditions, the six being any comments from the city's fire department will be addressed.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Cracker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Miscellaneous review of an accessory building at 8160 Norton Parkway. Please come up, give us your name and address. Tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do.
Good evening. David Cornblue, 3919 Beechmont Trail, Orange Village, Ohio, 44122. And I'm here with Mark Siegel.
Mark Siegel, I'm partnered with David here, 23650 Hazelmere Road in Shaker Heights.
So what we're planning, what we're asking you guys for approval for tonight, and thank you for your time again, is something that's been anticipated for a while, and it's a storage building on kind of the southwest corner of the parking lot. This was kind of anticipated by the original site plan where that space was going to be used for two potential generators. When you approved the parking lot expansion last year, there was a placeholder there for the potential storage building. At this point, we're ready to move forward with the storage building. The building is great. We love it. We need more storage, so putting this outbuilding there will help us operationally within the building. Our architect is here, if you have any questions for him, as is our building engineer. And we've tried to design the new storage building in a way that complements the existing building, which we think is really great, and is also cost-efficient from our perspective for building a small storage building. That's what we got.
Thank you. Larry, anything from the administration?
The administration, as the staff report indicates.
Larry, you got to get into the mics, you know, she's going to.
As the staff report indicates, there's four conditions. And the administration's concern is the architectural style of all the buildings in this neighborhood are of a higher quality. And it was our opinion, based off of the elevation drawings that were presented, that this building could be beefed up a little bit to meet those higher standards. There's a large lot of vacant land behind this that people are looking at developing, and this will be one of the things they could definitely see from their property, along with the nice-looking buildings. So that's where our concerns were, came about from.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
I have to agree with the inclination of the city. You've got a very attractive building. I'm there often down the street, and it always stands out. And you've got some good tenants there, and it looks great. I'd like to see it be more like the building. I mean, right now, it's a metal building in a world where everything else around it is not that way. So I'd like to see it represent some of the same materials that you have on the building, not necessarily to that extent or the same extent, but, you know, if we had, if you had equipment there, if you had generators, you'd have a masonry wall around it, and the masonry would be similar to the building. So I would just throw out that idea that if it was more like the existing building, I'm not going to tell you exactly, you know, what you want to do, but if it was a little more of a permanent and sympathetic building to the building that you have, I think it would be more acceptable to everybody. It's also right next to another building. It's very close to the property line to your neighbor. They're going to see it probably more than your own tenants will. And so I would just kind of think about making it more, using some of the palette of materials you already have, rather than to go with metal.
Sure. So can I ask our architect to come up and just address that?
Sure, sure.
Because we agree with you. We don't want to cheapen this building that we've built that we're really proud of, and we also have landscaping around the building.
Yeah.
So I'll hand it over to the expert, who's better at that than me.
Todd Slaboden, 2111 KCFar Drive in Lynnhurst.
Could you spell that last name? Thank you.
So the original intent was, yeah, we have this building. The building sits behind a dumpster and some pine trees, so directly from the road, you'll see the top of it. The intent was to use color scheme that was, we have garage doors on the back of the main building that are wood textured and color. And then we have, you know, accent materials around for awnings and trim around the top of the building. So I was just trying to pull those colors together and kind of keep it inconspicuous in the back of the site. So it's dark. Now you can see the building, and all those panels are silver. There's glass, and there's wood. So we changed the darker siding to a silver metal siding. And, you know, we don't have glass. We don't have anything else to break up the facades. We've got one man door. But you can see the dumpster in the background, which now has about trees that go to 10-foot-high behind it.
What's the dumpster enclosure wall made of?
It's a decorative concrete block. Like, it's smooth, like a smooth concrete block.
I mean, again, not trying to dictate the solution, but you've already got a structure back there with masonry on it and a certain color and a certain texture. back there with masonry on it and a certain color and a certain texture. Maybe that could be incorporated with the base of this building, and maybe some of the other, some of the material that you have there also, but to try to make it look, like what happens if, I'm just throwing this out, I'm not telling you to do this. What happens if that you take the same masonry you have around the dumpster up to that height, and you bring it around this building at the same height, and then everything above that is metal? As an idea of tying it to something it's next to, and still trying to go to the construction type thing. I, I'm not trying to get, I'm not trying to negotiate, I'm just saying, that's a possibility of tying it into something that's already there, right next to it practically, so, and, and maybe some of the coloration from the main building.
Is there anything else?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, Larry, in your item number one, you're kind of telling them that we need to change this building to be more like the building that they have on site?
Correct, we are.
So they can work with administration on getting something, or are you looking for something more from us to?
We could do it either way. If, if the commission wants to put it back on the administration to do the approval, we've been working with them, kind of came, from my understanding, came to an impasse. That's why we brought it to the commission for this. We can go back to the, and work with them. You've, you've basically told them what you're looking for, and obviously, if they don't want to, if we can't come to an agreement, we can always bring them back again. But it's really, you know, you can either table it tonight and have them bring back drawings that you're happy with at the next meeting, or we've got the conditions that we can work with.
Thank you, Eli.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cocker.
The question for the applicant, so are you willing to work further with the city on some of the things we discussed here?
Yeah, there's no question.
Okay.
Yeah, and we've, we've, I think we've, I'm not sure about the submitted, but we already have a new, like, metal panel that's smooth, that's the color of the building, and it looks like the building, and, you know, for the outside. As far as adding, you know, stone, I, I don't, there, the dumpster surround is made of material that's not on the building. So that's, you know, I, I get that, you know, but we're kind of doing, we're, we're trying to make it blend in, but again, we've got a wood-framed building against a steel and glass building. So, and it's just, you know, for the use of it, it's a non-occupiable building. It's just for storage. They have it conditioned because of the materials that they're storing in there, the files and things like that. Just to those nature, they wanted to keep it tempered. That's, so the whole thing.
Okay, thank you.
Question for the city.
Mr. Cocker, are you?
I am, thank you.
Mr. Varga.
Did you, did the city provide this?
They provided that.
Okay, well, I'm not sure I understand the purpose of it, then, because.
The purpose of that was to show that that is the plantings that are on the north side of the building. We were asked to do landscaping, which we, which we submitted, and it was fine, but the point is, is that landscaping on the north side of the building is different than the rest of the building, because there's no sun on the north side of the building. So we were asked to provide landscaping on the north side of the building. So I was just, that was just a photograph I took of the building to show that.
I guess I was, when I saw this, I was thinking about something else, which is the fact that there's a masonry, masonry base to the building. Is that the same masonry as on, around the dumpster enclosure?
I am not sure.
I don't believe so.
You're not sure. It might be close, but I'm not sure.
Well, I guess what I took, when I saw this, I said, well, you know, here, here's the, the scheme. You're not putting windows in, obviously. You're not putting windows in, obviously, but you could put in metal panel or some, something similar, you know, to try to be sympathetic to this image, rather than just a, a, a dark gray anonymous metal building. I, I have a question not related to the architecture. Why do you need a storage building on your property? The, the, the city is filled. Everywhere you go, they're putting up storage buildings.
When, when we, when we built the building and we designed it, you know, we filled it up, we have three great tenants. They're all very happy. They don't have enough storage in the building. They used all of the space for people, and particularly the law firm, although they're more electronic than they used to be, they still have a lot of paper. And I think they still have some materials at their old property that they got to get out of there. So they, they just need more storage, and they don't have it inside the building. And, and as we, we mentioned a minute ago, we need it to be air-conditioned, because a lot of it's paper, and so you don't want it sitting there getting hot and humid in the summer in particular, yeah.
I just wondered, because, you know, like I said, they're building up storage buildings all over the place, and, you know, you could put it in there, air-conditioned and heated and, you know.
And I suggested, why don't we just, instead of spending whatever, $100 or $150,000 to build this little building, it'll be, just go to get a storage unit around the corner, and.
Right.
The tenants want it there, not in the car ride.
Okay, I understand. I mean, you got to.
There's just some functionality to it.
You got to do what you got to do. But I, I think that at least some of the consensus here is that we'd like to see this more, have more relationship to the existing building. So I, I'm going to make a motion to table this, so that this can be brought back at a later date.
Table it, or can we work with the administration?
Table it, so that we can.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would recommend tabling it to the commission. That way, you retain jurisdiction at that point. Something's worked out in the interim, so be it, and the city can decide to pull it from the table at that point or dismiss.
So my motion stands to the table?
Second, then.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Cocker?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thanks, guys. Larry, anything from the administration?
Nothing.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Go, go.